Which is the 6.6, Discussion of Sheriff's Department Staffing. With that, I'll invite the sheriff up and go ahead and... You should be allowed to wear your airborne wings with your sheriff, you know?
She talked me about that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. As you see, I brought a couple of members of my staff with me, and there's some additional members in the audience, as well as Chief Probation Officer Rob Howe. This is a topic of discussion that affects a lot of people, not only in our departments, but a lot of people in our community. Well, my hope for this presentation is to go over an overview of what our current staffing levels are, what they should be, how we got to where we are, outline some of the solutions that we've tried to implement, and come out of this at the end with hopefully some direction, guidance, or approval from the board to bring something back to the board as far as some solutions to get us out of our staffing problem. One of the things we're going to talk about is our staffing plan. The staffing plan, I've mentioned this at a couple of different meetings with the Board of Supervisors, but the facility was approved for construction in 1995, and a staffing plan was approved by the Board of Supervisors in 1995 under Resolution Number 95-196. And in that staffing plan, it also had an overall cost projection lifecycle of the facility, and I want to talk about what it predicted we would need to run the facility over the course of 30 years, and of course, we're 27 years into that, and do a comparison of what it looks like actually today. In 1995, it was projected that the budget needed in the upcoming fiscal year would be $12,784,000, and our actual budget is, we expect it to be in the neighborhood of eight and a half million. The staffing plan projected the need for a total of 63 law enforcement personnel. Back then, they were classified as correctional officers and sergeants, and you see the numbers up there. It anticipated that we would need 55 correctional officers, which are now classified as Deputy Sheriff Corrections, as well as eight sergeants, and our current position allocations are down to 44 and six respectively. That's a pretty marked difference of nearly four and a half million dollars and a staffing difference of, an allocated staffing difference of 13 positions. I bring this up here to show that this is a result of many years of the sheriff's office, not only under my administration, but under previous administrations, continuing to do more with less, continuing to meet the needs with less and less money and less and less staffing, but still getting the mission accomplished. And we're here today because we're at a point where we're not able to do that any further. What was projected back then out of the 63 allocated positions, I want to put this up there to kind of give a visual of what that would look like in people there. Those, the green bodies there would represent Deputy Sheriff Corrections, and the yellow would represent Sergeants, next slide. Here's what we're currently allocated, a total of 50 positions, 44 being Deputy Sheriff Corrections and six Sergeants. And out of those positions, we have functionally 17 that are filled. We have an additional seven that are on leave or going to be on leave for various reasons. Those reasons include being on modified duty, light duty because of injury, light duty because of medical conditions, they might be on leave for some protected leave, family medical leave, child bonding leave, those types of things. We still have to recognize that we have obligations to our employees that we have to meet, so we have another seven that are on leave for various reasons. And in addition, this presentation was a little bit, it was a very much a working document because the number of vacancies that we've had continues to increase, and right now, we are currently aware of three that are either resigning or retiring within the next couple of weeks, and some as soon as next week. And we anticipate there's going to be additional resignations and/or retirements as time goes on. And so that's what we're looking at. We're looking at 17 filled functioning Deputy Sheriff Corrections. And when you compare that to what was approved by the Board of Supervisors and what was outlined as the need, 17 happens to be the number of correctional staff that would be necessary to function a full shift as projected in 1995. The staffing plan that was approved by the Board of Supervisors back then called for two escort or rover officers, four fixed housing officers. For any of you that, if you've been out to jail, you recall that we have different housing units, and the staffing plan calls for a housing officer to be stationed at each location. We've made changes. We've tasked Deputy Sheriff Corrections with performing multiple functions. Instead of having one correctional officer performing housing function, we might have that correctional officer covering two housing units and also asking, acting as an escort officer and also acting as a booking officer. The staffing plan called for two booking officers, a shift supervisor, three transportation officers, a transport supervisor, two classification officers, and one disciplinary, or part-time disciplinary slash grievance officer. And when you add all those up, that comes to 17, which is, that's per shift, and that's the number of people that we have right now. Next slide. Same obligations exist. With those 50 allocated positions, we have the 23 that are out there, and you subtract the number of people that are out for various reasons or planning on retiring and resigning in the near future. Their duties include housing and supervising inmates. We have to transport inmates to court, to various medical appointments, to and from other facilities. We have to go pick them up if they get picked up on warrants out of county. We have to take them to state prison if they're sentenced to state prison. There's various transfers that need to occur while simultaneously performing intake and booking procedures on fresh arrests. People that are getting booked for warrants are, the sheriff's office is tasked with administering warrants throughout the county. In addition to those daily duties, the staff has to calculate credits. When the court sentences somebody to a certain amount of time, there's a calculation that goes in, takes in consideration any work that they performed, any good credits that they perform, if they calculated or performed any, completed any programs such as education programs. Somebody needs to monitor that, and that's another task that they do. We have people that are in alternative work program, home detention assignments. We have to monitor them because they're still our responsibility. They're technically considered in custody, but so, serving an alternate sentence, and we need to make sure that they're properly supervised. We have a registration program for our sex offenders, for our narcotics offenders, our gang offenders, and they also perform the live scan function, most notably for some of the cannabis licensing that goes on with the county. And they also have to assist our medical providers out at the facility. So you can see that the tasks are very difficult, and with the staffing levels, it's causing quite a bit of strain and stress on the staff. We've searched for several remedies, and again, I'm here because I think I've opened ideas, but I feel like I've largely exhausted all the remedies that I have available at my level, my authority. We have a deputy trainee that's in the academy. We've assigned six, and that number might have changed again, I think, as early as since yesterday, but when we created this presentation, it was six deputy sheriffs that are currently assigned to the jail to work in transportation and to help in some of the housing units. Our staffing problems extend out to the dispatch center. We also have some significant shortages in the dispatch center, so we have three deputy sheriffs that are all assigned to dispatch, and we're also staffing an extra deputy sheriff position in the courts because some of our part-time staff is not able to work as much as we had hoped. What this all results in is a reduction in services at the street. It's had an impact on our patrol. We've not been able to fill our school resource officer position simply because we don't have the people, and it's currently going to have an impact on some of our other specialty assignments, including the Roadmap Task Force and our marijuana investigation and enforcement. So we had some proposals, and again, continuing theme, this presentation is a work in progress. We completed this. I got a phone call since we completed this presentation that makes this particular slide. And this, here's where we get into the proposals that I would like the board to consider and hopefully approve in concept and direct staff to bring back for approval. Our first one is, we recognize that our deputy sheriffs that signed up to be street deputies that are finding themselves in positions to go work and help at the jail or work in helping dispatch, sometimes they're having to do that for prolonged periods of time. For example, we have one deputy sheriff out of the last seven years, I believe she spent five years working in dispatch and sometimes working five 12-hour shifts routinely during the week, and we're experiencing some burnout there. We wanted to incentivize that by providing for, or asking for, a 10% staffing incentive for any DSA member who was assigned to the jail or assigned to dispatch for any reason. I will tell you that the uplifting news that I got from the Deputy Sheriff's Association meeting last night was that the Deputy Sheriff's Association realized that the staffing problem at the jail does not, while it may not directly impact their bargaining unit, it indirectly affects it. And in a, what I will call a show of solidarity and support, they've turned this down. They're not asking for a 10% incentive. They realize that it's very likely that it'll have an opposite effect. They realize that when they go out to work in dispatch, they're not a fully functional dispatcher. When they go out and work at the jail, they're not a fully functional correctional officer, and they're doing less work and getting paid more money than the people that are already there. And to tack on another 10%, they felt that that would be detrimental to morale for the other employees, and they've asked me to remove this request. The slide's still here, ignore it, but for me, that was a tremendous show of the dedication of the employees that you have here, in addition to working the mandated overtime for well over a year in the conditions that I've just described to you, to know that we still have public servants and law enforcement officers who recognize that sometimes the need for the greater good outweighs the need for the individual, and I appreciate that. Same with this. We're going to disregard this request, and it's going to have an impact on some future slides. Next slide. The other proposals that I would like to suggest is some enhanced hiring incentives. The Board of Supervisors recognized that these hiring incentives, particularly in law enforcement, and as they've also spread out to some other job classifications in the county, this is just becoming what needs to be done to get people to come work at your agency. The first thing that I would like to request is an increased hiring incentive from the $10,000 to the $15,000 for any applicant who has already completed the California Core Academy and who's already completed Penal Code 832 training, which is laws of arrest training. And that means that basically, that would eliminate about six weeks of training that we would have to have. This is designed to attract lateral applicants, people from other agencies that have already been employed. We have counties right next door, Mendocino County is a 1937 Act county. I would hope that this might attract somebody who's able to retire from that system and come work in a prior system and start a second pension, at least for a couple of years, and lock them into a three-year commitment, payable $5,000 each year for three years, first at the time of hire, at the end of their probationary period, and then at the beginning of the third year. While this looks good, I don't know that, I don't have a whole lot of hope that this would actually do what I would like it to do, but I want to put it out there.
I have a question about this.
Yes.
So we have the $10,000 hiring bonus now, and is there a time commitment for that?
There is. The current $10,000 is a two-year commitment.
Okay.
So this would increase the retention by an extra year and increase what we're already offering by $5,000. And when you think about the actual cost, if we're not having to send somebody to the academy, we typically have to pay for lodging expenses per day and the cost of the academy, and then not have that person available to work during the time that they're academy, this makes sense to do.
Just follow-up question to that, Brian.
Yes.
What type of impact has that, the $10,000 had at this point? Do you have...
I knew you were going to ask minutia questions like this, and that's why I brought the gentleman across from me, who's our sergeant that's in charge of recruiting, and I'll have him talk about his experiences.
Okay.
Actually, can we wait and get to, well, let me get through the slides.
Yeah.
Write that question down, because we're going to get to it. Well, the fact that we're here having a discussion, I guess, could tell you that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I want to make sure positive impact.
Yes, we are. Yeah, definitely. One, a very, it's not unique to our situation, but it's unique when you're thinking about in terms of being an employer. We have a legal obligation. Penal Code Section 4021 requires that we have an appropriately trained female custodial staff available anytime we have a female in custody at our facility. So of course, that requires that we have a number of female Deputy Sheriff Corrections available to us, and right now, we have one. Correct. And when I say we have one, we have more on the books, but we only have one that is not out on one of those leaves that I talked about. There's four that are out on leave. One of the retirements that is coming up is a female Deputy Sheriff Corrections, and another of the resignations is a female Deputy Sheriff Corrections, which leaves us with one fully functioning and able to be deployed in contact with inmates, female Deputy Sheriff Corrections. And that's going to be, that's going to continue to be a problem. The law enforcement profession has historically been male-dominated. Attracting females to this particular line of work has been a long-term challenge for law enforcement, not just here, but across the country for a long time, and it's particularly challenging here when we have a work situation such as I described, where they're being tasked with certain things. When the levels of female Deputy Sheriff Corrections that are available to work diminish to the levels that they have, it's a tough sell to get somebody to come work. We can fix that by hiring more females, and my proposal to do that is to increase, offer another additional enhanced hiring incentive for a maximum of eight successful applicants to female Deputy Sheriff Corrections, and again, with that same three-year commitment and payable in those increments that are outlined above, $5,000 at the time of hire, and then $7,500 a year after that until the third year. This is absolutely necessary. We're taking steps now to ensure that, do the best that we can to comply with the law, and this isn't a policy, this isn't a BSCC regulation, this isn't a best practice. The law requires that we have a female on duty at all times and available to conduct searches, and anytime a male Deputy Sheriff Corrections or correctional staff enters a housing unit or a room that's occupied by females, they have to be accompanied by a person of the same gender. We currently have about 40 females in custody. So it's not a matter of, hey, there's a couple, and we could contract them out somewhere else to be housed. It's a definite need, and I'm hopeful that this enhanced hiring incentive would result in maybe some people out there that were kind of sitting on the fence, maybe taking a hard look at this and coming and applying to work at our agency. I want to talk about a retention incentive. We have a recruitment and retention committee that's assigned to the county, and what we're, I think we all kind of knew that this would be an undertone, that we're offering incentives for people to come work here, and people that have been longtime loyal employees are sometimes feeling less valued, and I think we need to value our current employees, and offering a $5,000 retention incentive is my proposal for that. Again, this will come with strings. This requires a 12-month commitment from the employee. It will only be at the request of the employee. As I said earlier, there's people that are wanting to retire, and if they decide, oh, hey, maybe I'll stick it out for another year and I'll put in for this, I'm happy to make that available to them, but I also want to recognize that we're not going to provide somebody with an incentive and have them drop their retirement paperwork two months later. If, people that would be ineligible for this is anybody that's already received a hiring incentive from the county. It's, I think that's just the fair thing to do. I want to limit the availability of this to 30 days. We're looking for solutions to this. I want to know in the near future what our staffing is going to look like. I don't want to make predictions six months down the road or have to make adjustments six months down the road for somebody that, you know, decides then that's the time for them to do. We're at a point where we need to know now what our staffing situation is going to be like. So this will give us that idea. It will also recognize those employees who have worked through these tough times, those employees that have been working mandated 412s and sometimes six to seven days straight on 12-hour shifts, and we estimate that there will be about 27 people that are eligible for this particular hiring incentive. I don't know that they'll all take it, but I know that there's 27 that are eligible.
So this is one time, which in the next 30 days, or 30 days if this was, were to be agreed upon, and no other incentive could have been provided?
Correct. It wouldn't be available to anybody that's already received it.
And that's going to help plan for the next 12 months.
I would hope it helps plan for the next, and I hope it helps keep people here so we don't have another glut. Over the last couple of weeks, we've had half dozen resignations, maybe a little more than half dozen resignations and retirements.
And those, just to be clear on all the reasons of those resignations, there's exit interviews being conducted?
I've reached out to Human Resources to ask and reached out to the employees. I've only had one exit interview that I've conducted over the years that, where somebody's been candid and honest with me. I've had a lot of exit interviews, and I find people just like, they don't want to, they feel like maybe by being honest, they're bad-mouthing the entity and they don't want to do that. I've asked them to have those discussions with Human Resources and for Human Resources to share those results with me. So far, one person has responded to the exit interview, and there was a variety of reasons cited for them wanting to leave. A lot of them had to do with the work, the workload, and the fact that it's just, it's too taxing. I would like currently county employees, and I will share with you that I did have a discussion with Supervisor Sabatier, who couldn't be here, but one of the things that he brought up that I want to include in this is that we don't want to get into a situation where we have departments hooching amongst the county and just shifting these hiring problems around. But I also recognize that the county, being the largest employer in the county, has a pool of people that already work for the county, that already know what it's like to live here, and that's, a lot of the times, that's some of the challenges that we have is when we have people coming from out of the area, they're not, they're not willing to live a Lake County lifestyle where it's rural, where you don't make as much money as you do in your more urban areas, but the county already has a bunch of people here that are accustomed to that. And I would like the Board of Supervisors to allow me to offer that, these hiring incentives to current county employees, but limit it to a number of just 12. Once we hit 12 current county employees, and all the hiring incentives would be the same. Of course, if you've already received a hiring incentive, you wouldn't be eligible, but if you were a female that worked in for the county, and we've had applicants from other departments over the years that have applied for positions, we've hired some from other departments that have come in here, so I know they're out there, and maybe they don't, they don't want to because they don't feel incentivized, and I think this incentive, if we offered it to current county employees, and again, a limit of 12, might trigger some people to come apply and work for the sheriff's office. And all those incentives would have the same time commitments as they would for non-county employees. Two years for the standard hiring incentives, and if it's one of the enhanced incentives, either the previously trained or the female Deputy Sheriff Correction applicant, and strictly for the Deputy Sheriff Corrections job classification, that would be the three-year enhanced commitment. Our cost increase estimate, everybody wants to know, well, what's this going to cost? We factored out what the difference would be. We're already paying incentives, so the increase in cost for, would make any difference, I guess, for, if we were to hire current county employees for the standard incentive, but when you pencil out the numbers here, and again, this is one of the slides that was affected, with the 10% incentive, we estimated that would probably be in the neighborhood of $60,000 a year, so that's off the table. They've, as I said, the DSA has requested that be withdrawn, but the enhanced $15,000 hiring incentive, if we were to hire two, which I think is probably optimistic, you're looking at an increase of $10,000 in year three. So we're not going to, it's not going to cost us anymore until we hit year three. The female Deputy Sheriff Corrections incentive, if we were able to hire all eight, that comes out to an increase in the second year of $20,000, and then third years of $60,000. Our retention incentives are the biggest bite at the apple there. At 100, if everybody were to take it that's eligible, $135,000. So again, those numbers at the bottom, you can take $60,000 off of each of those, and that's what we estimate that it would cost. It's not, I don't think that's overly burdensome. I think that the costs there are worth it.
So I have a question about morale. So if you have these employees that have been with us for years and years and years, they're not eligible for any incentive, and yet they see everybody around them getting incentives, how is that going to be managed so we don't lose those valuable employees?
Are you, which...
Well, if you're not...
Are you talking about my employees? Or, again, well, I would...
Yes, your employees.
My employees, the fact that I'm offering the $5,000 retention incentive is designed to deal with that. I think our employees, and it's only for, when we're talking about our staffing levels here, you have employees, it's hard to say and explain unless you've experienced it. But when you look at our vacancy rating, we talked about we have a target of 20% vacancy rating, but when you look at your, the projection that was anticipated when the jail was built as far as staffing, and you compare it to what our available staffing is, it's a 70% vacancy rating. And when you have people that are a 70% vacancy rating, I would say that there's a good chance that their morale is going to be negatively impacted. So this $5,000 incentive, while we carry them through, while hopefully these other things are effective in getting those numbers back up, that carries them through, and while it's not a whole lot, it's something. You have people that I say that are already dedicated, but their dedication is drying up, it's leaving, and that $5,000 retention incentive is designed, or intended to be a show of appreciation from the employer, that their efforts are appreciated, we value them, and we want them to stick around for a while. If you're talking about overall with the other 900 and some odd employees that the county has, I would, that's, that's an issue for another entity.
Well, I'm just talking about your employees. So if they're not eligible for any incentives, yet they see everybody around them getting incentives, so their workload would likely go back down to a more manageable level if everybody around them is...
Yes, and the group that the staffing shortage impacts the most outside of the Correctional Officer Association is the Deputy Sheriff's Association, because they're having to pick up vacant positions. They're having to work in dispatch, and they realize that, hey, if we get these staffing programs fixed, I can get back out there and do what I was hired to do. I can not be, maybe not be in dispatch or not be working at the jail because there's people that are being hired and trained to go out and do that job, and I can get back to the street and conduct those criminal investigations, or I can get back in the school and be the school resource officer that I wanted to be. So our hope is, is that by shifting them back to the job that they originally signed on to do, that's going to improve their morale as well. And the fact that they've foregone that 10%, that request for a 10% incentive in order to make that happen and not further erode morale in the currently impacted units is a testament to how much they want that to happen. Morale's a hard thing. We talk about all the different things that impact law enforcement hiring. I will tell you that this is not unique to Lake County. Just sitting on my phone, I typed into Google, law enforcement hiring challenges, and as recently as, I think it was April, CNN did an article on nationwide staffing shortages. The Police Executive Research Forum recently did a study that showed an increase in retirements of 44% this year and an increase in resignations of 18% this year. And all across the nation, eight entities are having difficulty staffing people. It's for a lot of reasons. It's for pay. You have the sentiment that a law enforcement officer that's out on the street is one bullet away from death, one bad decision or one bad situation away from being indicted. You have competing interests. You have agencies that surround us that offer hiring incentives that either match or exceed ours. And for example, Sonoma County has announced that they're, they've told our staff this in our fields, that they're considering a $20,000 hiring bonus for correctional staff. Ukiah Police Department and Mendocino County Sheriff's Office both offer $20,000 hiring incentives. Even Humboldt County offers a $12,000 hiring incentive, and if you're willing to go to work at Redding Police Department, they have a $40,000, I don't know how they do this, a $40,000 hiring incentive to go, for laterals to go work at Redding Police Department. You have a workforce that's faced with legislative changes. You have the civil unrest that's associated with excessive force, the George Floyd protests. You have legislation that's recently been passed that's going to make it more lucrative to go work at McDonald's where you can make $22 an hour, or you can be a public safety dispatcher and answer 911 calls on weekends and holidays in the middle of the night and listen to people giving their last dying breath for $18 an hour. These challenges are not going anywhere. The solution is, or the problem is universal, but I think the solution needs to be right here in front of this board and in this county.
So what goes hand in hand with the financial changes could be, what is the research for nationwide for the non-financial ways to improve morale?
I don't know that there's a bunch of research on that, on the non-financial. Like I say, I think the police reform that's gone in has had the, it's simply had the effect of making law enforcement a less attractive career choice for people. You hear stories, the reality of it is that the overwhelming majority of law enforcement officers, there's 80-some-odd-thousand law enforcement officers in California, I don't know how many hundreds of thousands across the country, go to and do their job to the best of their abilities, but one situation can result in them being indicted, killed, imprisoned, and they see that so many times. There's still, thankfully, there's still people that are willing to come out and do this job, but clearly, those numbers are less and less. I don't know. I don't know, you know.
I'm just wondering if there's success stories where, I mean, it's a problem across the country, and you, we can look at the financial side of it, but what else can be done? That's all I'm asking.
Yeah. Well, I'll tell you some of the things that we've tried here, and as, as I said earlier, I've, I'm out of ideas. If you have more, I'm happy to hear them, but some of the things that we've done here, John Drury is a sergeant with our agency, he's dedicated full-time to going out and recruiting people. We've sent him to nationwide trainings on police recruitment and, and techniques and tactics. He's implemented a bunch of different practices. He makes personal contact with applicants, which seems to help. When he gets an application in, we streamlined our hiring process. Back when I was doing his job, it wasn't uncommon for us to do recruitment, and then four or five months later, we would get the list of applicants, and of course, everybody by that time already had a job. He streamlined some of those processes where he now has instant access, and I'll, I'll thank the, the Human Resources Department for working with us on this as well, but he has instant access. As soon as somebody turns in an application, he can make contact with them and start that process rolling, because I'll tell you that the, the qualified applicants get grabbed up really quickly. They're, they're few and far between. We have competing agencies, as I said, that frequently offer more money and higher incentives than we do, but that personal touch that, that we try to put on it helps out a lot. We streamlined the testing process with the Deputy Sheriff Corrections testing. It used to be an antiquated system where we'd tell them, hey, we have 10 people coming to apply, we'd have to mail off, and they'd mail us 10 written tests. It's now streamlined, and he's able to conduct those tests online. We administer the state, what's called the Pellet B, which is the police entry law, what's, police entry...
Level law enforcement test.
Test, which is post-approved test for all police officers to take. Post still currently uses the, that old method of mailing out tests, taking a couple days at least to get there, and then take another couple days to process. Post is beta testing, an online version of it with a couple agencies. We're hopeful that that will be successful and make that same resource available to us, so we can process these applications quickly. And a lot of it's the, the hiring incentives that we offer, and I'll, I'll allow John to give his testimony on, on what his experiences have been as far as hiring. Do you want to go over these numbers, or you want me to go over?
I can go over.
Okay.
I, I took over this position in March of last year, to where I've been in, doing the hiring and recruiting. In 2001, related to the correctional deputy position, I did seven recruitments, there were 85 applicants, and three people got hired out of all of those. One has already left for another agency and making more money. This year, for correctional deputy, I've done four recruitments, there was 30 applicants, and there was four hires. In March, or in May of this year, I switched to doing a, we opened it up for a continuous recruitment, and that has allowed me to have access to NeoGov through Human Resources, so like the sheriff was saying, I'm able to get the applications same day if I'm sitting at my computer and able to see who's applied and call them. I call every applicant that comes in, and I'm able to arrange testing for them now, instead of having to order the written tests like we used to, I'm able to do them online. So that process has been streamlined, and since May of this year, we've had a lot more success because we're a little bit quicker. With 48 applicants, we've had one hire, one conditional hire letter, we have two in backgrounds currently, I have four interviews tomorrow, and I did, there were seven that took the written test yesterday. So there's, it's getting better, but the applicant pool's not there. I was talking with Lieutenant Ward, and he was saying, a few years back when he was doing my position, that on average, there was 50 people that were applying per recruitment, and right now, I'm having an average of maybe 10. And usually, out of that, you'll have five that show up, two that pass the test, one that maybe makes it into backgrounds, and usually, maybe one out of eight that get into backgrounds, pass backgrounds. So the applicant pool's just not there. Related to the hiring incentive, and if that's drawing people in, yes, that, when people see that big number, or bigger number, it is attractive. Every other agency is doing it right now. If we're not doing it, then we're completely behind the ball. Dispatch was another thing that I had taken some numbers for, because we have three deputies that are up there. In 2001, I did six recruitments, 51 applicants, three were hired and two have already left. This year so far, I've done five recruitments for dispatch, there's been 44 applicants, and nobody hired. Related to the deputy, the patrol deputy side of things, the DSA side, you know, I, I had some success going to academies and recruiting people to come here on that side, but now we're to a position to where we're assigning these people that assigned, were signed up and agreed to come here strictly to be a patrol deputy, and now we're putting them in assignments that they didn't sign up for. Now, we didn't lie to them about anything, because we've never experienced anything like this with having to assign so many people to, to jail on dispatch, but these folks that paid their own way through an academy, we didn't sponsor them, they paid their own way to be able to work the streets, now they're going and doing things that they don't want to do, which was the idea behind the 10% incentive, to try and give some sort of an incentive to these people that, you know, hey, we're sorry for doing this, you know, this hopefully will ease the pain, but what will ease the pain is getting them to be able to do the job that they signed up to do. Go ahead.
Another, another step to improve morale, as I, as I mentioned earlier, our, our most critical and legally challenging staffing shortage comes with the number of female Deputy Sheriff Corrections that we have available. As I said, one, unless she decides she wants to take a full-time residency out there, which I don't anticipate, is not, doesn't, won't allow us to meet our legal requirements. So we've had to move some of our female patrol deputies out there to cover shifts. You know, as of, as recently as yesterday, we had a meeting with Chief Rob Howe with probation department, he says several employees over there that have got previous experience both in our facility and are both trained, or as well as some that are trained that had worked at the juvenile hall. And so we've worked out a very temporary solution, it's not a long-term fix, to have appropriately trained probation officers basically have their workstation out at the Sheriff's Office to cover some of those shifts where we don't have females available. I want to thank him, he's here to answer any questions you have as far as the impacts of that, but the idea is that they're not going to go out there and be, perform correctional officer duties other than when it's legally required for them to perform searches or join male staff as they enter into female housing units. Again, temporary solutions, we can...
But with, I mean, that's, it's temporary in short term, but it's also going to take a long time to make those hires, unless you're trying to attract them from another department?
Yes, um, yes, yeah, it takes a long time.
Yeah.
I have a question. What are the requirements for basically a CEO? Is it, is it similar across the state?
The requirement to be a Deputy Sheriff Corrections is 18 years of age. The law changed and made it a 21-year age minimum for street deputies, but for the correctional deputy classification, you can be 18 years old, high school graduate, I think citizen or obtain citizenship within one year of appointment, pass a background investigation, medical psych, physical agility...
Driver's license.
Driver's license, and that's, that's it. We provide the training, unless somebody's, as I said earlier, if there's somebody that's already appropriately trained, we will provide the training and send them to the academy.
And then with dispatch, is there, is there a common training for any officer that goes through like the academies? So they already have that training to become a dispatcher, or they just kind of like, just kind of wing it?
No, we're having to train them up there as well. They're already familiar with a lot of the things that dispatchers need to learn upon initial hire, they're already familiar with what, what the codes are, the priority of designation of calls, identifying what's a crime versus what's a civil matter, which is, or how to kind of triage complaints. They already have some of that training. Post requires that anybody that's working in dispatch, either within one year of appointment completes a dispatch academy, or police officers have an exemption to that requirement, and they can work in there as well. So we can't just simply put other civilian staff in there to fill that role.
So commonly, it's probably someone with a little more experience that you probably put in that position, or is it just random?
We, we, what I try to do is not put anybody that's on probation for anything in there.
Okay.
So we have the, the ability to evaluate their, their performance. So generally, it's somebody who's not on probation as an initial hire or on probation as a supervisor, but we're, we're finding that we're, we're getting to levels and the need, particularly amongst the female Deputy Sheriff Corrections staff, that we're having to deviate from that.
And probably is another, you know, lowering morale type of thing?
Yes.
Because they want to be on the street.
Yeah.
Another question I have is, how soon do you anticipate some of this working? I know that it's going to take some time, like you said, but do you have an estimate? Maybe like if all of this goes through, how long you think it will take before some of these temporary fixes can kind of work itself out and balance out to estimate it all? Did you guys discuss that, or is it just...
I would hope that within a month, we would start seeing an increase in applications, but as far as the actual working of it, it, it takes time to hire somebody. You know, somebody gives two weeks' notice, and it takes months before we get somebody to replace them. The hiring process typically takes from the time we get their application, on the quick end, about two months, maybe, if it's a local person.
It's extremely quick.
Yeah, extremely quick. If we had somebody local, or maybe somebody that's already, you know, employed at our agency and is looking to promote, maybe we could do it in two months. All the way up to six months, training for Deputy Sheriff Corrections is about a month, and then they also have an in-house training program that lasts 16 weeks. 12 weeks or 16?
12.
12 weeks. Same for dispatchers, the same timeframes, we do a full background investigation, our background investigations are fairly thorough, it's not simply a fingerprint check or credit check, we do very thorough background investigations, where we talk to previous employers, we talk to neighbors, we talk to roommates, current spouses, significant others, former spouses, significant others, and really do a deep dive because of these, these positions are so important. So it's, the background investigation isn't just a simple, you know, Google search, it takes quite a bit of time, and when there's people from out of the area, it takes even more time. And again, with dispatchers, the dispatch academy is about three weeks or a month, and then their training, their training program is another, anywhere from four to five months. So it's, like you say, a two-week, a two-week notice is, takes a long, long time to recover from.
Is there a thought of incentive, incentive for dispatch at all, or?
Well, I, I hadn't factored that in there, but seeing that the deputy sheriffs have graciously foregone their request, that's certainly on the table, and that's what I would hope, hope to come out of this conversation, is some additional discussion from this board, and knowing that those, the proposal is suddenly $60,000 a year or less in anticipated or estimated costs, I, I absolutely, I would entertain those, same incentives being made available to our current dispatch staff.
We, like, because I know with court, we usually, you know, contract retired officers to come and be bailiffs. Is that ever thought of for things like transport from the jail to the court, or even dispatch at times? Maybe that's another thing we could look at, but then again, I don't know the pool of retired officers in the county and whatnot, so.
Yeah, well, we, we make use of every, I, I don't know that we've ever turned somebody down that's retired and wanted to come back and, and not put them to work, who were doing that in some capacity.
And then with regard to, you mentioned like numbers of people, one out of like 80 at times, is it interest, qualifications, or some of the background investigations just kind of takes them out?
So along the, it's way less than one in eight, we're, I mean, we're probably like one in 15 people that apply actually can make it through the process, but maybe like one in eight people that actually go into the background portion of it, they've passed the written test, they've passed the oral board interviews, and we put them into a background, like one in eight are failing out of that from background issues.
And that's, that's the bare minimum that you can accept according to law? Is that how it works with those type of tests?
Post, Post has dimensions that we're, we have to weigh out each candidate with to be able to hire them.
Okay, that's all.
We'd, we'd like to think we have a perfect system, we do as thorough a job as we can, but anything less would result in you hiring people that were, would be detrimental to the county, the profession, the agency. We, we do a pretty, pretty deep dive when we do background investigations.
And those would probably be standard across the state anyhow, like, so?
Yeah, every, Post has its, there's legal requirements, obviously, you can't have a, you can't be convicted of felony because you can't possess a firearm, you have to meet certain age requirements, certain education requirements, but every agency has its own set of standards, and they're, they're fairly consistent across the state. Nobody wants somebody in uniform with a badge, and again, that shouldn't be.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No, I guess the only comment is, obviously, I want to thank you for coming with some type of solutions or opportunities. I know that we're doing the incentives, you know, for me, I think those incentives are very important to carry forward. As you said, all across the Bay Area, all these other departments are, we're not going to be able to reach some of those levels, like you talked about Redding doing 40,000, but I know even the Bay Area, Oakland, some of the other places are, are doing these incentives. Seems like it's, it's, it's a new way to do that, so let's, yeah, I'm in favor of all, including the dispatchers at this point, at least coming back and having some more discussion as a board, because it's needed. You know, we need, as you said, retain the employees that we have, we have great employees here in the county all through, but today, we're discussing the Sheriff's Department, and we've got to get, we've got to get some help there. So it's good to hear that the $10,000 is at least being a positive opportunity for people to look at the job and come in and fill out the application, so let's hope any other changes we make will just help drive those changes you guys need over there.
And I guess what I would, what I would close with, and of course, we have the opportunity for public input, and I'm hopeful to hear some, maybe some additional suggestions from members of the public, but what I would ask for is, I guess, consensus direction, guidance from the board to return at the next board meeting with a resolution implementing these, these requests.
Yes, yeah.
I just have one question. Have we identified a revenue source to fund these incentives? Or is it salary savings, or?
I don't know that we'll have salary savings, because we're eating our salary savings by having sworn staff work in dispatch. If, if this is my opportunity to identify a revenue source, I'll identify revenues from the cannabis funds. These are, these are one-time expenditures, and I think that would be a good source.
We have budget hearings next week, so I thought we, could we just have the expanded conversation there?
Well, that, if that gets this implemented as quickly as next week, that would be awesome. I, I want, I want to get this done soon.
We wouldn't be able to pass a resolution, though, that we could...
So ideally, if we brought it to the next meeting, which would be the Tuesday, the resolution would be for the budget hearings, would it be possible that after the budget hearings that next week, if we can discuss it, go from that point and, and pass it the next week? Or could we pass it in the budget hearings as well? We could pass it in budget.
We could pass it in budget hearings?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that, that's next week, so. You all right with discussing? Oh, Ms. Grant, go ahead, sorry.
It should be listed with the budget hearing action, so it's clear to the public what may happen, but it can be included.
Okay, I think we have time to add it if need be, or, okay, yeah.
So does that need to be a standalone resolution, or will the budget hearing resolution, I can do either, or probably be easier to do a standalone and more clear?
Let me look into that, and I'll let you know.
It's going to be a standalone.
Thank you.
Okay, it'll probably be standalone, according to Ms. Grant, so I hope that helps, and any other questions before I open it to public or comments? All right, anyone from the board? Okay, so I'll open it up to the public, and it looks like we have someone, if you come up, state your name, and we'll start at three minutes and go from there. I see a hand up in the Zoom room, so. We'll let Joan go first.
Joan Moss, I have been really interested in the Sheriff's Department through the years. I want to ask a couple tough questions. I want to know if there have been any deaths attributed to the deputies, if you've had any deaths in the last year, dying or being shot, and how many of the people retiring are disabled?
Is your question, how many deputies have been shot, or have the deputies shot anybody?
She's correct.
Pardon me?
I think she's attributing it to injuries, deaths, things like that, I think, is what she's...
Employees that have died?
Yeah.
Ronnie Warren.
Couple years.
A couple years.
Nobody's died?
Or in employees, no.
All right. I think, let's see, I think we have someone on Zoom, 707-281-6205. If you can unmute, state your name for the record, and we will start at three minutes.
Good morning, good, good morning, this is Bart Levinson, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you so much. I, I, I'm not sure I'm going to know how to ask this question correctly, so it's...
Good morning, this is Bart Levinson, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you so much. I'm not sure I'm going to know how to ask this question correctly, so excuse me if I got it a little mixed up. But what I want to know, Sheriff, you mentioned that you might have to pull the officers that you have available for marijuana enforcement. What I want to know is, what is the number that you need that is healthy to sustain our current marijuana industry and, we can't ignore it, our illegal marijuana industry? What is the difference between the numbers of officers that you need, the numbers of officers that you have, and the number of officers that you might have to because of your current difficulties curtail further?
Thank you for that question, Bart. The numbers that will need to be fully functioning and not be diverting resources into the jail would be 34 deputy sheriff corrections, and the number of dispatch would be eight dispatchers. And those are bare minimums.
Need 34 officers for marijuana management?
No, I need 34 deputy sheriff corrections to be hired at the jail so I can divert my resources away from the jail, back out into patrol, back out into school resources, and back out to marijuana. My staffing levels with the deputy sheriff, the patrol deputy sheriff series are at an okay level right now. That's not where I'm having the problems. The problems are caused because people are being diverted from their normal assigned duties to cover the staffing challenges that we have at the jail.
And what is the staffing that you need out on the street? Just so the public can have a perspective. I hear you say 34 are needed in corrections.
What, when I started working here, our staffing levels on the street, where we had six, six people assigned to patrol on each shift, we had six plus a sergeant. So there was four deputy sheriffs that were assigned to specific beats. We had two cover deputy sheriffs, one to work North County, one to work South County, and one supervisor. So for patrol alone, that's 28. We could use another five or six in investigations, two more in marijuana, two more in roadmap task force, and another five in bailiffs.
All right. Thank you for answering those questions. I think, I don't, I think you've got the answers to your questions. I think we're at the three minutes. You know, and I encourage public to always ask questions. I just like to highlight this because in my town halls, this happens as well when the sheriff's there. But some of these folks that are conducting illegal grows, and they watch these meetings, they understand these numbers, they know, they strategize. And so I just encourage, always ask your questions, but at the same time, it might help sometimes to just reach out to the sheriff on the side directly and talk about this. That way, we're not giving a roadmap to some of the criminal activity, if that makes any sense. Any other questions from the public? I don't, I see, no, that's the same hand, so I don't see any other hands up, so I'll go ahead and bring it back to the board. And I think we have a consensus on the direction for next week during the budget hearings?
Yes.
Does that, does that work for you, for everyone here?
Thank you. I have a lot of thanks to give. My staff that's joining me here in the room, Chief Rob Howe, the board supervisor for the support in this, is extremely challenging, and I'm hopeful that this, this gives us some progress. And I also want to give a big thanks out to our staff that's been working during these tough conditions. It's just getting harder and harder, and hopefully there's some relief insight.
Only request, just working closely with CAO to make sure that what we bring back next, you know, we can, we can make the changes that we need to, so...
Thank you.
All right, Sergeant Drury, Captain Taylor, Sheriff Martin, and Lauren, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.